Time being six o'clock, I'll call this meeting to order. Please shut your cell phones off or silence them. And stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call please, Betty.
Sherry. Don.
Here.
Wanda.
Here.
Dan.
Sherry Hoffman.
Here.
Dennis Michael.
Here.
Kristy Schultz. Kathy.
Here.
Chris.
Here.
Angel.
Okay, forum present for both planning and county commission. Move on, does anybody have a reason to abstain for financial or non-financial reasons?
I do not.
No.
None?
Nope.
And can I get an approval of the agenda or any amendments?
Who's approval?
Second.
Call those in favor. Aye. Those opposed? Agenda approved. And we really, we could take public comment early, but I'll wait because we've got 10 minutes almost to kill before we really can get into the ordinance discussion. Sir. We're, I don't know if you're, we're gonna have a joint meeting tonight, so planning commission will have their hearing and then the county commission will have theirs in the same night. Do you care to speak at either one of them?
Possibly both, I'm the executive director of the Cannabis Industry Association of States.
Okay.
If you're going to, if you're going to speak, we make you stand at the podium.
Yeah, I dressed up for this.
So did our vice chairman.
So I'll, I'll call for public comment in a minute, but that's gonna be for general discussion. I'll also call for public comment when we get into the agenda item.
I'm sorry?
Non-speaker didn't go on.
Operator error.
Try the other one. Try the other one. Over on the other side.
You know what, there might be something where we can only have so many on at a time. I think it is.
Well.
Because when we were looking at these, there was, there was an option where you actually had to, they were off all the time, you actually had to push it to jump on because they couldn't support all of the microphones. Right now, call for public comment, if anyone would like to make a comment on any subject not on the agenda, now would be the time. Hearing or seeing none, I'll close public comments. We still have five minutes. That's all right, Valley.
Mr. Healy just runs the meetings more efficiently, apparently.
Right, that's right.
Well, you were on your phone, you missed public comment. I mean, if, if you want to do one, he might open it back up. Yeah, you have to say your name and then tell us.
I drove by your house a couple days ago.
What does that mean to you?
What? I drove by your place a couple, a couple days ago.
Which one? My house or my?
Your house.
My house, oh, was I there?
I don't know. It was, you know, was it Tuesday morning, I guess. Wednesday's yesterday.
Today's Tuesday.
That's right. Everything goes.
You sure it wasn't Sunday morning?
Could have been, I guess.
After a while, they all tend to run together.
I'm here. It's kind of as a joint meeting, obviously, with the one public here, do we need to take public comments? Then those are the planning discussion and then take public comments. Okay. I mean, six ten, we'll move on to item six of the agenda hearing per ordinance twenty-one Z N dash oh six and ordinance amending the Yankton County zoning ordinance definitions, article five, article ten, article eleven, and all amendments there to regarding regulation of medical cannabis establishments in Yankton County in accordance with the provision of chapter eleven dash two nineteen sixty-seven South Dakota codified law and amendments thereof and for the repeal of all resolutions and ordinance in conflict therewith. So we'll have a, a joint meeting and discussion between the planning and zoning members and the commission members. And then we'll take public comment and and I'll just start with a brief overview, I don't know how many planning and zoning members have been up to date. So at the county level, we've, we discussed originally handling the, the medical cannabis through, simply through licensing with the county. It was felt that the state, you know, regulations and whatnot are gonna, are gonna, would justify simply a license. Kind of upon further discussion, we, we felt there was no vehicle, if I possessed a license, there's no vehicle in the ordinance to allow me to operate, right, I could have a liquor license, but I still either need a CUP for a bar, depending on which, which district I'm in, or a bar has to be a permitted use within the district I'm in. And so there, even though you would possess the license, there would be no vehicle to, you know, grow, sell, what have you. And so what's drafted in front of us is definitions, Deb had worked on. So definitions for cannabis cultivation facility, dispensary, manufacturing facility, testing facility, a cannabis establishment, a non-licensed cannabis establishment. And then where they would fit appropriately in the ordinance and what's, what's proposed in front of us today is it would be permitted principal uses for all of those in lakeside commercial, the ag district and commercial. I don't see commercial though. Commercial. So is anybody at the county or planning and zoning level have any questions or discussion before we take public comment?
I guess I have a question, I guess about the the procedure. If you, if they're coming in, say, to the zoning or, or they come into the office to get a permit to establish one of the, the facilities or the criteria that's listed there. Do they have to go through that process first before the licensing process?
No, so.
Do they have to actually go and apply for the license prior to coming in to?
The license would, would take place first.
First. Yep, so, so I'm talking chicken and egg.
Yep.
You know, so we're saying that because it's, there's a couple of issues where you run into where they come into us first and then find out that they can't do it.
Right.
On this particular instance, I think it's imperative that it's, the license is established, so you have, there's some, there's some oversight or whatever, that's really not the word I'm hoping at, but something that tells me that that person has went through the process to get the permit or get licensed to distribute or grow or whatever.
Right.
The product before they come in and actually want to put it to sale.
Correct.
How many licenses are you gonna allow in the county?
So what's, what's been discussed at the, at the county level, and so that won't affect this ordinance, of course, but at the licensing level, it's been discussed anywhere from one to unlimited, we've landed at ten. So that would be, that would be ten grow operations, ten manufacturing, ten distributor.
Just in the medical, because this is what this is doing right here.
Yeah.
Yep.
We don't think there'll really be ten of each, but we have seven opportunities to get a off-sale liquor, and I think we've got, what, two applications? Because you have to jump through a number of hoops and you had, so there's a $5,000 non-refundable application fee. So I think that will cut some of the wheat from the chaff, men from the boys.
And so I understand that the dispensary and the grower operation are tied together, only, you can only grow for this dispensary, you can't grow for every dispensary.
That's not my understanding.
Okay.
That might be able to weigh in more, that's gonna be more state permanent.
We would make Deb step up to the podium too, for the home viewers.
You have to have a separate license for each establishment. So a dispensary has to apply and get their own license and so does a grow facility, they don't have to be attached.
So someone, I think what she means is, if I have a grow facility, can I only sell to this one dispensary? Is that?
Yes, that's my question.
Yeah.
I don't believe that, that's part of it at all.
Yeah.
You can have a license to grow, a license to dispense, a license to test.
You could have five dispensaries and one grow and.
Yep. There's nothing that says only, you can only grow for a certain dispensary. That's why you have to have a separate license for each one of those establishments.
So I, I'm referencing a face through Colorado things that I've been reading, so that, that's perfectly logical that we may operate separately, which is fine. I understand you have to have a license for each regardless.
Right.
As you need to hold them to some things, but it was always from Colorado reading that it was, they were kind of tied together.
And I think a lot in Colorado, if you look at it, a certain entity will probably have all of the licenses. So I think in Colorado, what you see is an organization comes in and they do grow, manufacture, test, distribute. And that's part of, I mean, that's just all that they do. So I think in Colorado, I would, I would guess the majority of them do it that way.
That makes sense from a small
Yes.
town, small community, small operation perspective, so.
Yeah.
And I know that you can't grow medically and then sell recreationally, if that's the correct term. That part is not allowed, they have to be grown recreationally and sold recreationally.
Right.
That's a whole separate thing that we don't.
If that ever happens.
Right.
Yes, we're still waiting for the Supreme Court to let us know that. But the idea would be for the zoning purposes, you're establishing tonight where any or all of these facilities can be located. And then once that happens, next week, the commission will take a look at how they want the licenses to be issued and what that process will be. So really, tonight, I, I, I would like to hear some discussion, we don't have a lot of people here, but I would like to hear discussion on those three areas, lakeside, commercial, commercial, and ag, and how do you feel about one of those establishments or all four of them? Because again, to comply with the rules, which my understanding is now is gonna happen October fourth, you must allow for at least a dispensary in some way, shape, or form to be in compliance, so. Anything else?
This doesn't affect the personal.
No.
Private uses, that's something totally separate, I know that was discussed in.
Right, no.
So I think at this time, if everyone's ready, I'll open up public comment because I got a feeling a lot of our questions will be answered. And then we can certainly continue discussion. If you could state your name, please, for the.
Yes, sir. Ned Horstedt, I'm the executive director of the Cannabis Industry Association of South Dakota, work group of Ned Horstedt, N E D. Thanks for allowing me to speak tonight, born and raised in Lincoln County, graduated from Harrisburg in two thousand and four, was pretty involved in the campaign effort, and then towards the end of the campaign, we started getting a lot of questions from entrepreneurs about how they might be able to get into this business, so we founded the industry association, we've got probably about thirty members across the state that are interested in, in the business side of things here, so I'll probably have a couple of questions for you, it sounds like you might have a couple of questions for me and I'm happy to help however I can. First glance at this ordinance for zoning, it, it looks pretty good, I talked to some of your staff this week here, I had a couple of questions, the, the ETJ area, that is the city's jurisdiction, is that right? Okay, because I noticed in their ordinance that they, they said, you know, nothing in that particular area, which, you know, that's within their purview. Planned unit development, is that yours or, I'm trying to figure out, you know, whether or not that makes sense to add, other than that, I think, based on what I looked at at zoning, this looks like it's pretty open for business, which is what we're interested in.
Planned unit development is something that, I mean, they're, they exist, but they're created, so if I want to start a project, I've got five to ten acres, like right now, we have campground in one, but if I want to do something that maybe encompasses, I don't know, I know an example, I've never seen it happen, but an example that was given to me was, let's say I'm in a residential district, but I wanted to, to start neighborhood bar and grill with a development there or something like that, there's potential to modify the zoning district within the zoning district.
Got it, interesting.
It's not something that, as far as like permitted in there, it's something I think, probably if someone wanted to come forward, could we put it in? If this were to pass, Deb, and I wanted a PUD that included marijuana sales, I think it could be put in through that process. Because it's an amendment to the ordinance, a PUD is an amendment to the ordinance.
Conceivably, and I think the only one that it would work in would probably be that
Yeah.
Just because I don't think it would fit in Lakeside or Lakeside.
Right. But anyway, it's not a district like, like ag commercial.
Got it, it's like a special zoning area for, usually for a short period of time or certain period of time.
It's.
It is permanent, okay.
But it's a true change to the zoning ordinance.
Sure.
So it goes through a similar process to this, and so.
Yeah, and I guess, I mean, I haven't had hours to study the zoning map within Yankton County, but that's one thing that I might consider as an enhancement to what you have here is just, you know, whether or not you all want to consider adding that, I appreciate that the commercial districts are here, having it in ag is excellent. Partially because I live in Lincoln County and that's where the association's based, we had a lot of success working with Lincoln County and kind of being a beacon of free market there and they allowed it in agricultural use as well as industrial and commercial, and of course, they have different zoning than a lot of the other counties here, but I guess that's one question I would have for you and something that I might recommend, and you obviously all know much more about your zoning in your own area than, than I do, but if it's not residential, if you allow other businesses in it, might not be a bad idea to, to at least have it as being allowed.
Well, and how that works though is that there really is nothing allowed in a PUD until the PUD is created.
Got it.
When you create it, you put in what's allowed within that district.
Okay.
So it.
It'd work kind of like a conditional use then, sort of.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool, well, yeah, other than that, I think, based on what I'm reading in this, it looks looks good. See if I had any other questions. I guess this is not directly related to zoning, but you'd mentioned what the fee was or what you were kicking around, I guess that's for first reading next week, probably.
A non-refundable $5,000 fee.
Okay. We're not on public comment for that particular topic, but yeah, states maxed out at five K, so I think that makes sense, we're seeing some jurisdictions do, you know, half of it refundable or whatever, but again, I can drop in next week and talk to you about that. I think that's all I had for questions and comments, so appreciate the work that everyone's put into this, any questions for me? Yes.
I just had some concerns from, like, say, law enforcement.
Sure.
R A versus Lincoln County then is a lot. So was there a concern by Lincoln County that they're going twenty miles out, which theoretically our sheriff's department would have to do.
Sure.
Because ag is, you know, all the way to Irene or all the way to Bollman or whatever.
Yep.
Lincoln County, did that come up at all?
Yeah, a little bit, and the way that they did it is, I think they, I think cultivation is the only allowed use within agricultural ground in Lincoln County. So they kind of split up the different license types, you have cultivation and ag as well as industrial, and I think there's two types of industrial in Lincoln County. And then commercial was just for dispensaries, but we're talking a little bit about what's called vertical integration earlier, so our position is that, and we've worked with the Department of Health as they've been putting rules together, and I think it helped them out quite a bit, the common thread within most decision makers at all levels in government in South Dakota is like, no one has a lot of experience with this particular topic, so we're able to help them out. I, I think, in putting together stronger testing regulations and some things that I think are important to public health and safety, but when it comes to splitting up the different license types, our position has always been both at the state and local level that we should allow, but not require vertical integration, and vertical integration is when you grow it, you process it, so, and then you are able to sell it, so there's three different license types involved there, there's cultivation, there's product manufacturing, and then there's dispensaries, and then the fourth license type is sort of its own animal, it's testing, which I think is, I mean, it's effectively the regulatory piece of the industry, so you test after, after cultivation happens, you test the flower, if that goes into product manufacturing where they make a.